We're recording.
All right, we will call the October 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. First item on the agenda is would you call the role, Ms. Ramble?
Jade Castile?
Here.
Jim Jackson? Pete McGory?
Here.
David Miller?
Here.
Steve Pajali?
Here.
Connor Whalen?
Here.
Mike Zuloff?
Here.
So, just a question for Mr. Hastings. The fact that Mr. Jackson isn't here and he, did he call in?
Not with me.
Okay, that, that would be an unexcused absence, correct?
Unless the commission chooses to excuse it.
Correct. Well, I think I'm gonna stick to the, the new policy as an unexcused absence. Okay.
Well, unless somebody makes a motion.
Hopefully he'll show up.
Yeah, probably.
Our next item is the approval of the minutes from September 24th, 2025. Everybody had a chance to take a look at those? Can I get a motion to approve?
It's been moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I'm gonna abstain, I, I was out of state at that meeting, so I don't know what took place.
Please note that Mr. McGory is abstaining.
And I, I will also abstain as I was not at that meeting.
Okay, please, please note that Mr. Miller is also abstaining. We'll move into new business, the final planned unit development plan for Battery Park. That would be 701 East Water Street. And Ms. Blair, are you going to kick that off?
I am, thank you, sir. So, we have received the final planned unit development documentation for the Battery Park project. Parcels, numbers, as you see on the screen here. And just a reminder of the process, so first step of a PUD is the Planning Commission evaluates the preliminary development plan and the proposed zoning change, which happened and was completed on November 22nd, 2022. And then they refer the zoning to the City Commission, the City Commission holds an additional public hearing, and that was completed on April 23rd. So, that the preliminary development plan and the zoning have been approved, and we are waiting the final development plan documents, which is what is before you today. So, this is the final step in the zoning process. It's not the final step in the development process because they still have some legislative items to bring to City Commission, but this is the final step in the zoning. As a reminder of the land area we are looking at, it's a number of parcels at the east edge of our waterfront, known as Battery Park. And you can see a turned site aerial view looking east today, so there's marina land uses, Battery Park itself, and a lot of surface parking today. There's a few more photos of existing conditions, fencing along the waterfront, some aging park infrastructure. This is the preliminary development plan that was approved, as we mentioned, in April 2023 by the City Commission, which was recommended by Planning Commission. And I'm gonna flip to the final, and you're gonna see that it's, it's the same plan, there are no substantial changes, I'm gonna flip back and forward again. It's, it is more advanced, obviously we have a lot more documentation here, but this follows the preliminary plan that was approved. A few takeaways from when, as they move forward into design to get to this stage, some little changes that have happened along the way. So, first, we have refined floor plans for the condo and apartment buildings. There's an additional 21 apartments from the preliminary plan and a reduced number, minus two condos, there's 68 condos, so very slight adjustments in those numbers. There's 90% design for the public realm improvements, all the civil engineering, that was not started at the preliminary development plan timeframe. There is an increase of number of parking garage spaces and on-street parking spaces, about 59 additional parking spaces from the preliminary, just as those things start to lay out, as they get more detailed and specific. They maintained the 28% open space, and that is 8% more than is required by our code, our code requires 20% for PUD, so it's an ample amount of open space. It's about 9.46 acres. The additional from the preliminary is because of all the streetscape areas where they'll have plantings, that open space calculation wasn't in the first preliminary plan. And then they've also, you know, narrowed into the retail locations to complement those residential commercial land uses. There's 52,051 square foot in the final development plan, that's about 5,700 square foot less retail space than it was in the preliminary. So, roughly the same plan, the same thing, it's just more refined on, on each of those numbers. There's a series of tables that shows the exact square footage calculations and comparison in the development narrative. It's also in the staff report. So, there are nine sections of the final development plan, there is an illustrative table contents in your staff report, so there's, we did our best to, to define each of these items that was submitted in the documents with just one or two sentences, to help Planning Commission, the public, and future staff understand what is located in the document, where things are located in the document. The first section is the final PUD development narrative, that's the little small thumbnail image we're seeing here on the top left. There is an, that's a, like a nine or 12-page document there, there's more descriptions of the design principles, there's more descriptions in there about what each exhibit is pertinent to, which will also help the administration of the document in the future. We chose to walk through just a few things I wanted to make sure to bring your attention to tonight, and not every single exhibit, but if you have questions on the exhibits, I would, please invite them from you. One item is the preliminary subdivision plat, so our subdivision, our major subdivision process requires a preliminary plat and a final plat, that's showing us what parcels are going to be defined in the final development. The preliminary plat is part of your submission today, so that'll be a part of that approval. And then we'll bring the final plat in Novem, we're expecting to bring that to you in the November meeting, that will have those parcel lines without the draft mark on them. Also, there's civil engineering plans in this final PUD submission, it's about 30 or 40 pages, if I recall correctly. That is the stormwater, the utilities, the roadway cross-sections, everything that will become public right-of-way, those are at about a 90% level in the final PUD. You'll see that final drawing, those final drawings again, when it comes back with the final subdivision plat in November. There's a lot more detail in the proposed building elevations, so I wanted to touch on ways that this shows up in the documentation. So, we have what, what I would characterize as close to like a 60% architectural drawing, the facades of the apartment building and the condo building, and then details, and you can see in the design options, overall design principles of colors, materials, very specific to the articulation of these facades, so we're sure we're understanding what that outcome is. And one of the benefits, I think, to the advancement of technology in architectural design is the renderings that they're using, the renderings they're showing us, that is the design technology that they are using, that's what's exporting these facade renderings and the diagrams. So, the colors that we're seeing in the development renderings are what is depicted in the design principles in the document, and what we can expect to see when they build the product. Here's another example of the detailed architectural facade, this is when you're looking from the water, from the marina, to the public space boardwalk area, and the retail on the bottom floor with the condominiums above it, and screenshots of the different design options they're showing, from the types and styles and colors of brick, to the styles of the engineered wood siding that we'll see on the higher levels floor plans, and different wood character, surface colors. There's more detail in, for the residential unit floor plans, so in the condo building, it shows typical floor plans and arrangements of the different rooms in the, for condominiums and for apartment buildings, so there's pages of these to show all the different types of units, depending on where they are in the building. There are landscape plans, so there's a overall landscape plan that shows the different textures that we will expect, so the hardscapes of the planning area, including pavers, different types of concrete finishes, the different types of curbs, and planting bed edges, there's tree, proposed tree species, lots of details on the landscaping as well, that is depicted in the renderings that you'll see. Overall, what is required by our code is design principles, so the, the amount of architectural detail, in, in a lot of cases, is even more detail than we require, so that for those buildings that don't have a specific architectural facade in the building plan section, there are diagrams like you're looking at here, which create design principles. And what that does is specify, since this building that we're looking at here on the screen is not fully designed yet, it specifies that when the building is full designed, it will have brick and windows and alternating panels that look much like this, if not exactly like this. So, there's flexibility in the documentation for them to make design decisions when they get to construction documents, but staff will be able to administer the planning, the zoning code, to make sure we get the outcome that we expect through the documentation they've submitted. If that makes sense, hopefully I've articulated that well, but please feel free. So, here's another example, there's six potential picnic tables on the bottom right, that's a screenshot from the landscape book. It doesn't mean that all six of those will be in the park, or that any one of those will be in the park, but what they put in the park has to meet that spec of design character and quality in order for us to approve it when we see those final drawings, when the building department will send them to us in their building, for their permits, does that make sense? Thank you. They have also submitted a schedule in the final PUD plan documents, their plan is to have this fully designed through the end of next year, and see the construction through 2029. So, in that schedule, they talk about starting site excavation as early as this year, before the end of this year, but to have that site and infrastructure, marina, and the standalone retail building in construction in 2026 and completing in 2027, to have the condo building, the north parking garage, and the piers and breakwaters in construction from '26 to ' '28, and the hotel landscape, south parking garage, and apartments, 2027 to 2029. So, plan, what the code asks you to review in a final PUD document is like A through H, so I highlighted some keywords here. The first one is that the development can start within the next 18 months, and their schedule does show that they want to start immediately. We know they have funding with a brownfield grant to do site excavation specifically, so they're showing that they can start within 18 months. The code asks us to see if the individual units of the development can stand by themselves, so if they built part of it, or if they built one building or three buildings, it could stand alone and still be advantageous, and from staff's perspective, that is true, especially because it follows the principles of what we want to see from the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan in the previous Battery Park plans, with the extension of the street grid, and with buildings that are making, making sure there's public access all around the edges, to the public access to the waterfront. It asks us to evaluate whether the streets and thoroughfares are suitable, and the civil engineering drawings have all been vetted and guided by our Public Works Department to make sure that they are suitable for this scale of development. It asks us to look at any proposed quasi-public development is justified, and I would call the quasi-public examples would be the pool for the apartment building, it, it is absolutely justified that the apartment building would have its own private amenity zone, so residents have a place to be outside, it's not fully public, and the marina guests have a pool on their second floor, so there's common space for the marina guests and marina members that's not fully public, those are all, also justified. It asks us if, if there's any deviation from residential districts that it's, is warranted, in this, there is not deviation, so the, the proposed residential follows our residential multifamily and downtown business zoning, the previous zoning of this site was downtown business, so there's no need to explain any deviation from those code requirements. It asks that the area surrounding the development may be planned and zoned in coordination with this proposed development. Staff would, would say that this is also true, because the area surrounding this is largely zoned downtown business, and has been considered an important development area for decades in the city. It asks us to evaluate whether the planned unit development is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and this has been confirmed through the approval during the preliminary plan process. That staff report focused greatly on the principles of the comprehensive plan and the downtown plan being fit by this development, and that the existing and proposed utility services are adequate, which again, our Public Works Department has vetted those civil engineering drawings all along the way. So, with that, we would recommend approval with the following conditions, that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agency prior to construction, and that the developer ensures that during construction, to the furthest extent practicable, public access be maintained to existing public facilities. Of course, we understand that if they're building the pier, we're probably not gonna be able to go walk our dog on the pier, but we want to make sure that they maintain public access to the extent possible during construction, and really consider that as part of their construction phasing and construction management. Finally, I would mention, we do have a rendering walkthrough, so it's actually like a, a walkthrough recording of the renderings, which I can key up, it's like on a loop, if that is not distracting, I can start that whenever you'd like, Mr. Chairman, and also the developers in, in the audience today, if you have questions for them. So, just let me know when you'd like me to put that video on, so you can see it, it's a couple, it's like 20 minutes long, so we're not gonna want to just sit and watch it, but it has a good idea of like the development character and stuff, so. I could narrate it a little bit and then stop talking, or we could just put it on, or I defer to you.
How about if we, we start it now, you narrate it a little bit, or, or these gentlemen, and maybe we stop it and come back to the table and get, get into some discussion?
So, here we're on Meg Street, looking at the water north and taking a right onto what will be the new extension of Water Street. So, the view that we're looking right forward is the first building, that's a parking garage with a retail space as that anchor at the corner, and so the downtown's behind us, Meg Street is to the right, this is the hotel building, right is the entrance to the development. So, now we're into new area that's not built yet, it's parking lot today, so this would be the extension of Water Street. You can see the character of the streetscapes and the on-street parking, similar to other really rich public realm spaces like a proper park, like Columbus Avenue, right, it's got the foot traffic and interest of the type of development that the Planning and Development Ordinance was created to enable. On the left, there's ground floor retail spaces, on the right, we're walking past, or running past the hotel. Coming up here soon on the left, you're gonna see an area where it's open air, that you'll be able to walk to the left, and it would surprise me if they don't turn us that direction, but we'll see. So, be able to walk to the left here to get to the water, that's exactly what they're gonna do. So, now you're looking through, so this is, this is a public accessway through the building to get to the waterfront, and we're looking at the condos above, a couple stories of condos above those retail spaces, and this is the way you would get to the parking garage, so if you park in that central parking garage, you'd be able to walk right through that building, through the other building to get to the waterfront. Continuing down the Water Street, Battery Park is there towards the end, and they have a rendering of some kind of sculptural figure to act as kind of a breadcrumb to lead people down that direction. See a little bit more retail space there going to the left and to the right, you see that new street coming up, that's where that apartment building is. And then up in the far upright, you'll see the standalone retail. This is another place where there's a public accessway through the building to get to the boardwalk at the waterfront, a couple retail spaces with condos above. And then there's that new street, there's that standalone restaurant building, that's two, two floors, and the apartment building there, so you can get an idea of the views that they'll have and how the character looks. So, going forward towards Water Street Pier, this is where you really get to that Battery Park space, so there's the same acreage of Battery Park that there is today, but removing what's there today, which is that pool in the building, the public space, the, the most valuable space of the whole land area gets dedicated to the public, which is along the waterfront. This is a turnaround area that's also acts as a plaza, and then the Battery Park, and I don't know if they're gonna take us all the way out the pier or not, they're gonna turn us around maybe to look at the rest of the development. So, you'll see, if you keep walking to the right, you can get to the boardwalk, there's the condo building, there's that restaurant building, and then the apartments behind. It's about third of the way in. Oh, they're gonna fly us up like we're in a drone now, to get an idea of the character of the scale of the buildings, looking at the marina, along the waterfront, you can see that different color of that boardwalk, that's what's gonna continue all the way around. They're gonna show us what it looks like in different daylight, sunset. There's a second story there on that restaurant building for views, imagine potential event space, depending on who ends up being there. Now, we're back at Meg Street. So... Is that the loop? Okay, that's the loop, all right. Do you want me to turn it off?
What say, will it distract our conversation?
There's no noise, you can just let it keep running if you want.
We'll let it run.
That concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blair, you did, you did a nice job. You really did your homework on this. So, and do you, as the applicant, do you gentlemen have anything you want to add?
Um, I'll stand up here and introduce myself. My name's John Seines, oh, it's hot, Director of Development for Maru's Development Group. Like Aaron said, the project hasn't changed much, we've really dove into the details. The Marina Services Building is the first building that's gonna go, so the Brownfield, we're looking to start that before the end of the year, so we'll start mobilizing here in the next few weeks. We have keyed in with some of our boaters that they could potentially be in a temporary facility, next boating season for the Marina Services. We are planning to coordinate with our boaters and keep the marina mostly in phases. In the off-season, we'll plan on doing those improvements, but everything else is moving forward, the condo buildings, 40% construction set, Marina Services, 70% apartments moving along, great conversations with not only some local, regional end-users, but some larger people too, so we're having some great conversations with those.
Okay, and the, the hotel, was that gonna be 142 keys?
125 to 130 keys, yeah.
And are most of those buildings, are they four floors?
Yeah.
Okay.
The PT building, the condo building on the, that's, first floor is 18 feet tall, just to give you an idea, for those commercial spaces and everything, gives you that, you want that height, so that building is four stories, but it's a taller building.
Higher.
Yeah.
Okay, and the demolition of the, the restaurant down there, will, do you know when that will take place?
Yeah, so that's covered as part of the Brownfield remediation, so we intend to, Austin actually had the power shut off for this month, but we're gonna push that out, maybe use it for some meeting spaces, we kick off construction here, but I intend that building to come down this winter.
Okay.
In conjunction, we have to get building plan approvals, things like that, but those plans are moving pretty far along with the Marina Services Building.
Okay.
And it's intent, and as it always has been, Marina Services, condo and retail, then hotel, we're gonna start on the water and move inland, it just makes the most sense.
And then my only other question was, you know, there was a little heartburn about the, the way the weeds and the overgrowth had occurred, and I know you took care of that.
We did take care of it, and...
We can count on you to take care of that as we're moving forward.
Yeah, and one of the documents that you guys will see and commission that we're working on, Commissioner, is the amended development agreement, which is being amended to include maintenance, so all those responsibilities and everything is spelled out. So, not only have the drawings and this application move forward, but all those other documents, construction agreements for the subdivision, and the dedication of the road, all those things are moving along as well.
Okay, thank you. Are, are there any questions or comments from around the table from my colleagues?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Zuloff.
So, just to, at risk of repeating ourselves, and for clarification, for, for the record, this, this PUD is already approved, it's already approved by the commission, did, did we not extend the...
There was an extension, it was originally, in the code, it's 18 months to bring this, and there was an extension to, I believe it was October this month, too.
And then this approval technically would start the clock at 18 months again, but they, what we're hearing is the intent to move along immediately.
Right.
Yeah, that starts the clock.
You know, with, we, we have, we have an excellent relationship, I think, with this company, and so we're not too worried about, you know, recourse if it doesn't...
This isn't the last time you're gonna see me, I joke with Colleen and Aaron, they're gonna be included in some of these decisions, you know, this is a public realm, first and foremost, so we're sensitive to that, and we'll be a good neighbor.
I had a design career, so, you know, it doesn't, you can't show me anything where I wouldn't have done it differently, but on balance, I think this is very good for Sandusky, and, and it's, and it's an exciting development, so. But, but anyway, with this, this, this would be the final approval, then, we don't have to go to City Commission or anything, just so everybody knows.
Correct.
Right? I, I do, yeah. We, we have a, someone in the audience that I wouldn't mind hearing from the public, just because, why not?
I was going to give the public an opportunity.
Good, thank you.
But I wanted to make sure that we had all the information we needed before we...
Right, well, I'm certainly satisfied, so.
Okay, through you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment. I also agree, I'm excited, I think it's a, a great project. I do want to be clear, though, the amenities available to the public are basically being able to walk down to the waterfront, so there's not gonna be any public pools or anything.
No public pools, there's fishing stairs, upgraded amenities like that, we call them soft amenities, but yeah. The public, the pool now is, there are pools, like the apartment pool, the boating members will have a pool, and the condos.
Right, and I just bring that up because that's a sore spot for the community, there, you know, we used to have the surfs up, and seeing this PUD with pools that only private, the people who live there can use, I just, I just was curious, because I know there will be probably a response to that, so. But I, I'm excited about the project, I think it'll be good for that area, and so, I support it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. McGory.
I'm, I'm presuming that the, all the restaurants and, and the cafes in the hotel would be open to the public?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, restaurants and then the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool, yeah. Okay.
Mr. Miller, any questions, comments?
Well, I think my primary comment was addressed in the staff consideration about managing the property during the construction process, that was a concern of mine, and I would, I see that as trying to address that concern. So, I'm happy about that.
May I, I just want to add to one comment, one of the things we are proud of is the programming we're gonna provide within the park, so we'll be the HOA, the homeowners association, so the programming, managing the concert events, we want people there every day for the success of our restaurants, so that's what we're excited about, too, to offer to the public.
Yeah, it's advantageous for you to draw the public, obviously, I just was, it triggered my thought when you said the pools and stuff, I'm like...
Events and the actual using of the park is what...
Sure, I get it, thank you.
I'm glad this is pretty in line with what we saw the last time.
All right, all right. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Schwanger, I, I see you sitting out there patiently, I'll give you a chance to comment.
Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way, Chairman of Save Our Shoreline Parks. Not, not anything negative, it looks real good, just some suggestions, maybe it's already in the plans, maybe it's fine and done in the, in the details, but it, there are like three markers, three historical markers on-site that would include... are like three markers, three historical markers on-site that would include for the, some history of the railroads and, you know, Battery Park and the maritime history of Sandusky. Hopefully that stays somewhere, those markers. The idea of this project, and this goes all the way back 30 years ago, when we had John Iman here with the Marina District, and that fell through, but this looks a lot, lot better. I think the idea of this project is to make, is keep what we have now, but make it better as far as access to the waterfront and the piers, you know, hopefully the piers, like right now, probably forever, the piers were open into the night. We do get a lot of guys fishing in the fall on the piers, so hopefully the piers will be very well lit compared to what they are now. It's nice to see that there is going to be a commitment, a maintenance commitment, because we have had trouble the last two years with overgrowth on the piers, whether that be oversight or whatever, but it's been taken care of. That's just about, about it. I assume that the, going to the green space or the end of the Water Street extension, that there's going to be more grassy area than what is being actually shown in this rendition. The one question I did have is that I know that there's an ordinance, and I can't remember, Mr. Zuloff might remember, there was an ordinance passed that anything north of Water Street can only be one story high, and if we're extending Water Street all the way to the bay, I'm just wondering if this project would require a variance, or does that still stand true? Because we're seeing, I don't know, five, six, seven stories there along the waterfront.
Mr. Chairman, I can help with that.
Well, I would defer to the Planning Department.
It's Shoreline Drive, so this, the ordinance, he's correct that there is an ordinance that north of Shoreline Drive can only...
Two stories.
Yeah, maybe it's two stories, but I remember at the very beginning, making sure we understood if this was applicable to Battery Park or not. It is not.
Okay, just double checking. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
The historical markers, will you be able to salvage those?
Both the historical society and the parks and recs, so those are, have either been removed or set to be removed. We're also on the lookout for a potential time capsule, but, so we will be sensitive to that. No one really knows. There's just water cooler talk from some of our Marina operators and some people who have been around, so.
Mr. Wester.
And, yeah, to clarify, they have been removed to be protected, to be put back when the parks complete.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. Yes, sorry. No, we worked with your departments to get them.
Scraped them, melted down from the copper, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, other discussion from around the table?
I will just say, Mr. Chairman, pretty exciting.
Yes, Mr.?
Pretty exciting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Motion to approve the application, subject to the condition, the following conditions: all applicable permits, approvals must be obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agencies prior to construction, and during construction, access be maintained to all existing facilities, and that all historic markers be retained and or replaced.
Is there a second to Mr. Zuloff's motion?
He's...
I just have, and just...
You have a second, right?
Just in the spirit of being 100% honest, the word "all" just troubles me in that because I have to stagger access. So if Megs is under construction, I'm going to make sure Water Street has access, but the word "all" is hard. I just, splitting hairs maybe.
Okay, the word, the wording, if it makes you feel any better, the wording said access maintained to all existing facilities, not all access points, right? So, so you can't, right.
For the extent practicable.
It's going to be musical.
I chose the words carefully. Thank you.
It's going to be musical, by the way.
Was your intention to read as the staff had written it, or had, as you had said?
Well, I don't have this, but I have this, which only has one condition, but no, I intended to use those words. I chose those words carefully. It's fewer words. It's probably slightly broader in that it doesn't limit it to public, you know, it says "public facilities." I just said "all existing facilities." I did that on purpose because not everything there is arguably public, but we have existing facilities, so I omitted the word "public" on purpose, and I think it works.
Chairman, question.
Yes, Mr. McGorrie.
I was thinking while I was listening, and does the motion include the specific language to the furthest extent practicable? I didn't, because if it does, that would seem to resolve the issue.
I didn't say that, but...
I think it should be included.
Well, since we had it seconded, I would make the motion to amend my motion to include the, to the furthest extent practicable. If, if, I could make that motion if we think it's necessary.
Has it been seconded?
Yes.
I didn't recognize the second. Mr. Miller didn't raise his hand, so.
Well, for the lack of a second, can I make a motion again?
Please do.
All right. Again, motion to approve the application. One, subject to, one, all applicable permits and approvals must be obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agency prior to construction. That would be per our packet. Number two, during construction, access shall be maintained to the first, to the furthest extent practicable, practicable, to all existing facilities. And three, all historic markers shall be maintained, retained.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Mr. Miller seconds. Any further discussion?
That's what we're seeing on the screen, too. That is the second condition.
More or less, more or less, yes. Any other discussion?
My question to the development team, does that address your concern when it says "to the furthest extent..."
Practical.
Practicable, okay. All right.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. McGorrie. Ms. Ramble, would you please call the roll?
Connor Whaling.
Yes.
Mike Zuloff.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Jay Castile.
Yes.
David Miller.
Yes.
Pete McGory.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ramble. Okay, our next meeting is Tuesday, November 25th at 5:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, did we have any updates from the staff?
I neglected to ask for reports from the Planning Department.
I have one thing to announce. So I had mentioned before, we're starting a project called the Housing Development Accelerator. We're looking to understand ways that we could bring housing to the market, housing options to the market. We have three areas that we're going to focus on and have community meetings surrounding, so we expect them to be about two-hour meetings, and the first one is going to be about the GNC Foundry Site that's over on West Monroe. It's going to be at noon on Wednesday, November 12th, and it'll be held at the Erie County Health Department on West Monroe. The second one is that same evening. It'll be 5:30 PM. That's discussing the Cold Creek subdivision. There's parcels that are still city-owned within the Cold Creek neighborhood. That'll be held at the Sandusky Career Center. That's 4501 Venice Heights Boulevard. And then the next day, we are going to have one about MacArthur Park. There's a collection of city-owned parcels in MacArthur Park surrounding the Churchill Park area. That'll be held at the Mill School Rec Room, and that will be at 11:00 AM on Thursday, November 13th. You will see, we're going to have a little webpage built to explain this a little bit more. We're going to have some social media outreach to advertise those meetings. We're going to put yard signs at the sites inviting folks to those meetings, but I wanted to make sure that you all knew today, because they're going to happen before your next meeting, if you'd like to attend any.
Thank you, and this is, these are options we're looking at for affordable housing, because we have, I feel like, the condos and a lot of housing going up that a lot of people in the community can't afford to take advantage of, and I know we were kind of talking about options for affordable housing, but that's what we're looking at here, not more condos and stuff, right?
We are looking at how to add more housing units to the city and what is developed, what is feasible, what we could feasibly attract developers to come and build, and that does include market considerations for the demand for housing. So what folks hear, what types of housing options they need based on incomes, what they're looking at.
Affordable.
And that will all be part of that conversation.
The process, yes. I just want to stress that we really focus on homes that the, you know, majority of regular community members can actually afford to live in. As beautiful as these developments and these condos and the downtown apartments are, I certainly couldn't pay $1,800 a month, or 16, or whatever it is, so it's important to me that we definitely look at those, you know, focusing on affordable housing as a major priority, which I know you are, but I just wanted to say that publicly.
Oh, absolutely, and that's, it's all part of the puzzle, too, because there is quite a bit of research documented that new units, even luxury units, decrease the surrounding rents in the area, new options, open up options in the surrounding area.
Sure. It's a balancing act. I get that.
All of that will be, will be part of this discussion.
Yes, I understand. I'm just very passionate about, because I have to hear it all day, every day. We can't afford to live, which is across the country. It's not just Sandusky, obviously, but I just wanted to put that out there publicly.
Just to follow up on this conversation, I'm on the Board for Habitat for Humanity, and they, they build the house at, with essentially, well, not totally free labor.
Sure, I'm familiar with Habitat.
And, and the people that buy those houses really can't afford even to pay the cost of building it.
Right.
And that's, that's what's going on in the country right now, so I guess my point is, I don't know how you totally solve that.
Well, yes, obviously. It's not an easy answer. I just, that's why I said I want to explore the options and make sure we're prioritizing homes that we can actually, that people can afford, given, obviously, we know attracting investors and all those things all contributes. A big machine that all works together, but it's important.
I think the solution might be to bring in jobs that pay the kind of wage that can afford, rather than try to, try to bring the cost of the construction down. I mean, when you're talking about the cost of lumber and the cost of materials and the cost of construction labor, I just talked to a handyman who, who built a house a year or so ago with a big shop attached to it, and he can't believe he's got $750,000 tied up in it, and it's not waterfront property, so.
That's...
It's just the cost is unbelievable.
Right, and that's the point of trying to come up with solutions for that problem.
Mr. Miller, did you have a comment?
I just wondered if we could ask Ms. Blair to run through those three dates and times again.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, along that line, could we also have an email?
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Could you run through those dates, please, Ms. Blair?
12:00 noon, focus area, GNC Foundry, November 12th, Wednesday, November 12th, at the Erie County Health Department. 5:30 PM, focus area, Cold Creek, Wednesday, November 12th, Sandusky Career Center. 11:00 AM, Thursday, November 13th, focus area, MacArthur Park, Mill School Rec Room.
Thank you. I think the, the key to these sessions is that the public comes out so that everybody's voice can be heard, and I think you should, you should make sure you attend at least one of those sessions.
Oh, I will be there.
And you can get, get your voice put on the record, because that's the important part.
Of course.
You want to hear from the public.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion? If not, is there a motion to adjourn that may have...
We had a motion, no second. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, we stand adjourned.
Some...
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All righty.